Okay, I will. Call the meeting to order. At six oh two P M on Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We consider the republic, the states, one nation, united states, and free, just as for.
Do we have any commendations? Okay, we'll move on to. Public comment. So you want to say your names? If anyone online wants to, uh, just speak public comment, just please raise your hand. Okay, that'll conclude public comment. Uh, Will, what do you have first?
Yeah, MHS, uh, fall sports are in the, uh, midst of their season right now. Boy soccer is six and two, golf is eight, two and one. Volleyball is seven and two, field hockey is three, three and two. And just an hour ago, the boys cross-country team advanced to two and three. And similarly, the girls cross-country team advanced to five and O. Football is four and O, and the early risers basketball club began today at six fifteen in the fieldhouse. For those interested. The marching band has begun their performances, uh, including their last performance at last Friday's football game, which was very successful. Seniors are in the midst of their college application process. Uh, school counselors and teachers are working to get recommendations in over this next month, especially before the October fifteenth application deadlines. College visits to MHS are continuing. Nearly a hundred schools, including Dartmouth, will be here throughout October and November. To visit students. A P payments are due to that. Um, please get them into Miss Shatford here in the library if you haven't already. Eight MHS students were recognized in the two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Program. One of them, Senior Ian Schimmel, is a semifinalist. He and the seven others in the senior class were given recognition for their scores on last year's P S A T. Speaking of which, October twenty-second is this year's freshman, her sophomore and junior P S A T date. Uh, freshmen will conduct their day of service on that day, and seniors have the option to sign up for a college essay writing seminar or visit a college. On October eighth, will participate in the Mass General Hospital C R F Substance Use and Risk Related Factors Survey. Seniors in health class are currently doing the CPR unit that includes getting CPR certified. This unit builds upon the eighth grade CPR unit and is a useful certification for many students who may be lifeguards or camp counselors over the summer. Uh, this weekend, the boosters are having their annual donation drive, uh, on eleven thirty, at eleven thirty on Saturday. You'll see many student athletes walking around town in MHS gear. Um, please be friendly, uh, and please consider donating. Thank you.
Great, thank you. There are new schedule of bills to be approved tonight, so I will ask for a motion to approve. The meeting minutes of July second, two thousand and twenty-five, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, and September eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, nine eighteen minutes, some of the names of new made in second admissions will remain, so I just make sure that those get added in. Um, and I have notes and.
All right, I should, I have them.
But I'm fine approving one with.
All right, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Great, uh, the motion passes four, zero, and one abstention. Okay. Thanks, Will. So I'm looking for a motion to accept a donation intended to benefit the students of Village School. The Village School P T O would like to donate funds to have water bottle filling stations installed in each of the cafeterias at Village. Each filling station costs one thousand seven hundred and three dollars with an estimate of eight hundred dollars for the plumbing. Total cost of the project is four thousand two hundred and six dollars.
Seconded.
Any discussion on this item?
They can give to the village P T O for donating that.
Yes. Um, all in favor? Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Okay, um, I believe, uh, you're gonna. Let me assume the update on our town charter review.
Yeah, so, um, thank you. As we discussed, um, at one of our meetings this summer, the town charter committee, um, has a draft, they're calling draft B. Um, and they are asking boards and committees to review the sections of that charter that describe that board or committee's duties. Um, composition and whatnot, and then they're looking for corrections to factual errors in the charter. And so I reviewed article six, section six point eight, um, which covers the school committee. And I had one concern, which is that the section, um. Makes a sort of broad statement that the school committee has the powers, duties, and responsibilities given to it by state and town law. And then goes on to list out four specific areas of responsibility, which are responsibility for the school department, facilities and property. Responsibility for school committee controlled revolving funds. Uh, appointing senior district employees and as the policymaking body. And my concern was that it didn't address our responsibility for overseeing the budget once it's been approved by town meeting. And so I had a conversation with Amy Drinker and Sean Casey, um, and they proposed adding. The section for our sentence four point five, which is in the. Version of the charter that is in the packet for tonight. Um, stating that the school committee shall be responsible for monitoring budgetary compliance, school department collection. And that sentence tracks language from the Long Meadow Charter, which is what they have based much of their charter language on it. I would note there's this entirely separate particle in the charter, article nine, which is specific to budgets. But it's really focused on budget development and approval and not the administration of budgets once they've been first. So, um, I'm comfortable telling the charter committee that in the work of this, uh. This section of the charter, that change.
I'm not making any comment on this, and I never will, or whatever, because. Yeah, no, like, yeah, this is one. Tiny little snapshot of all the things that we do regarding laws and policies, so. I mean, they can do it like they will, but I don't personally feel that. I can say that this is all encompassing, but this does. So it is, I think it's, um. Think that's a challenge on this, on the chart, you know, because, for instance, to your point about budgetary compliance, yes, we are responsible, we're also responsible with coming forward with a budget to town. Uh, which is not, so, well, there's a separate business, there's a separate, yeah, which I don't know, so, yeah, I mean, it's fine, I think, you know, I don't, I don't think this has any. Thing to do with that, in other words, like, there's no, um. This has no affect on us.
Right. I mean, I will simply respond to them that, you know, if I review that section of the charter. That they addressed the actual concern that I had.
Do you have other any, you know, it sounds like the finance one separately, are there any other major ones that you think might or that could be included? A little worried about if people. Look at that document as to what we do versus kind of our website. So I just want to make sure there's not something major that you think, you know, a really major thing that we do is missing.
I think that it's just, it is, uh. It is too simplified, and so anything could be lost, missing, so that's, I mean, that's why. Ultimately, my understanding is this goes before town meeting for two of us, so, you know, it's up to town meeting. I don't know if they would be looking for us to improve this, probably not, you know, if they, if they so, um, you know, if I vote, so, I, I just, it doesn't. There's a whole bunch of stuff that they're subject to, it's not, I just don't know how they chose to sympathize, but I guess maybe they. Went by another town. Uh, charter. It's hard to put down in, you know, four pages, everything responsible.
This is something we didn't have to do, but just really getting that.
And I just, I said then that I report back to the committee after I reviewed it, and so that was.
Thank you. All right, our next item. Is, um, around the school committee goals, uh, for this, this year. Um. And, uh, we did circulate. A little bit of, you know, we wanted smart goals, and also, uh, there are six goals that have been submitted by members. Uh, so we all have access to that, uh. I guess what I'd like to do, um, again, this is the will of the committee, is for the folks that submitted goals to just briefly talk about. What the goal is, why it's important, and then maybe this is more for me, but just to make sure that the deliverables we're talking about are attainable in a one year. Because we're really, that's our timeframe, is one year, so just to make sure that it's not, you know, and I like stretch goals, but I also don't want something that may not be that realistic for one year, so.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Starting, um. This document is an open violation. Uh, this document that was shared with us is the opinion of, I think, two of the members, at least that was what Neil told us.
No, these were submitted by individual members.
Yes, and then shared with us by email, not in open meeting.
With instruction not to deliberate about it, but just to have.
Sharing the opinion. Even in itself. It is an open meeting violation. Like, in other words, normally, typically what we do is we come together in workshop in the summer, we need to share. Um, and we come to an open meeting, and we bring our ideas, and we sort of synthesize it. This was shared with us in advance. Which is an open, like, is an open meeting. You're not supposed to share your thoughts with a forum in advance. So in other words, I, we all saw the ideas of other, a form of members, um, or it was shared with the entire committee, and then we're essentially being asked to vote on it tonight. So. I'm not, you know, I'm not comfortable, you know, that's really what this is.
So. So then what I have to do is I have to say that we need to consult with our.
No, I think we could self-report. To, that would be the logical thing to do, just self-report and. We would come up.
You know, I think it's first to verify, I mean, I, I respect your opinion, you know, and you're probably right, but I. I guess we've shared, we've shared information before in the Dropbox and then processed.
We don't usually, we don't share our opinions on, like, one day, so I'm gonna make a motion that we self-report, this is the one.
Okay. Um. All right, so there's a, a motion on the table to. Say that we need to self-report an open meeting violation. So it's been moved, looking for a second?
Well, seconded for, this is just special.
Okay.
I think that. I understand your concern, Jen. I think that at the very least, you know, the intention in sharing it was not to be sharing the opinions of members, but to be giving the membership. You know, the suggested. Suggested goals, you know, for participants of discussion tonight. Um, so I think, I think I would agree with what, you know, Al seemed to be getting at this comment before. You know, that it's worth looking at, and if it, you know, if it is indeed violation, then we should.
Yeah, I think I, I mean, where I am clear, I think it's a good thing to bring up, Jen, and I'm not saying we have or have not, but I think it makes sense to figure out if we have first before reporting something. And if, you know, and if legal says that was a violation, then we obviously do report.
Okay, I mean, I think it's pretty clear. Um, I don't know that we need to necessarily take on additional costs to have this review. Um, there's no harm in self-reporting, we need to determine a remedy, which is probably pretty simple to do, um.
Wouldn't there be costs associated with, uh, with our lawyers? Handling an opening of a law.
We don't need our, our term. We self-report.
Into, to, to help, to investigate.
If we decided, we believe we.
I think. There isn't, I believe that there is an option that a committee member would be the chair, be Paul, Attorney General's Office. And inquire this to whether this, you can in advance, because already taking place. That my experience, that's what he said.
Yeah, I guess I still don't see the harm in doing some investigation with a commitment that if it is, it is indeed a violation, we self-report. And that's, maybe it takes a little bit longer, but. It's gonna make sense to. Because what if it really is not back then, and again, I.
If it's not, then they will tell us that.
Right, but then we shouldn't, then we didn't need to, then we didn't need to file an open meeting law.
But there's no. Negative repercussion to that. And we're coming over with what I believe is an open meeting violation.
Okay, so are there any further discussion on the motion?
Sorry, just unclear the, that I'm being uploaded onto the Dropbox ahead of the meeting. Specifically.
Yeah, so in other words, I have been. A quorum of us who can be aware what some members.
Yeah.
Are suggesting what their opinion is, that is supposed to be done, you know.
I see.
Which is why typically, not just our board, but other boards that are doing goals typically. You know, if you have a facilitator, which we have in the past, you don't have to have one, but we have, we'll usually give, you know, homework or pre-work. To individual members and say, okay, come to the open meeting with your pre-work done, and then we will.
I see. And develop.
All right. Uh, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, uh, all against? Uh, the motion passes four to one?
So one thing that we will be asked to do is to, we will be self-report, is to provide a remedy. To this. So. I mean, I have some thoughts, but, which I have some thoughts, do you have to buy what you're going to do to remedy this? One thing typically is you would share this. Right, well, I believe that's been done. This afternoon, and so that, well, it wasn't two days ago, we got this, we had all received, if it's made public, this wouldn't be an open meeting. But it was. Um, so that, so that's good, at least now it's, you know, it's public, um, I. We, you know, we could do any number of things, we could attend an open meeting training, which I think would be a good idea. Would have to just go through training again, there was learned something, um, I think we covered it this, this summer with our attorney. Um, but it wasn't a full, um, open meeting training, which is won't be our, um. Training that's done by the Attorney General's Office, so that would be something that we can. And a commitment that we won't do.
So I think there's, isn't there, so I think some of us, I'm signed up for an open meeting law training seminar, and I think some of us have been through it already, did that? Would that need the?
I think that, that's what I'm afraid, they do, but I don't know, they do it, there's been one, they're doing one locally.
They have newly elected members do one online, you're supposed to do it within some period of time of having been elected, so I.
Having this one same person is actually great, um, he's really good, I'll get, his name is Jason, if he's still there, he's very, very good. And doing it in person also allows you to say, well, what about this, what if, what if, what if, um, so that's helpful, but. You know, whatever, I'm willing to go through it again, um, online or in person, and we could. Have him come up and do it here, whatever, if that's the law, I think we also should commit that we're not. Going to do this yet.
Okay.
Who's gonna investigate if there's a training, because that would be, I'd love to. Because I always.
I think Chair would.
And I'll see, um, there is something, you know, I, I think there's one on. Might be on one of our meetings, but, uh, Sep- September twenty-fourth, so I'll forward you that information. When that's already existing.
I would ask the committee to consider, we may go forward with this tonight, that's fine, but I would ask the committee to consider bringing in a facilitator for this, um. These are one of the superintendent goals to some degree, um, in the school committee goals. Um, and even school committee operating, those are. Sort of quasi big, um, you know, responsibilities, and. I think it would be helpful to have a facilitator help guide us through this, which is, again, what we've done in the past, but it can help synthesize. And formalize. By different, you know, sets of opinions, um.
I have no problem with that, if that's the will of the committee, just add some time to the process, but if it's gonna get us to a better product, I'm fine with it.
I mean, it's almost its own. Uh, topic for, or at least a big, sort of sexual. Which, I mean, presumably it is tonight, but, um. You know.
Yeah, and I'm. I'm fine with facility, you know, setting that up if that's how we want to proceed as a committee.
Yeah, I think we still have an opportunity to talk about it tonight through. You may be able to, it's all very similar, but it's real, it's for individual discussion of facility. All.
I think that makes sense, when we. It's already the end of September, so. And we don't have a very heavy agenda tonight, so we can have some preliminary conversations about what members are thinking. Then perhaps some time with facilitator.
I think you're right, I think let's take the trial.
Okay. All right, so, um, given that, Andrew, do you want to talk about your two goals first, please, for us?
Uh, yeah, so a lot of my goals are. Uh. Reactions to feedback that I heard from the community around.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I just, I'm sorry, just a second, was this something you needed me to do technically? Do I have any goals?
Uh. Really focused around better communication, uh, and. Part of it, too, is developing tools that future can use to use, so that those, these are, so, forgotten skills, so the first one. Goal that I set was to tell district and community stories, this one. This goes into a lot of detail, so I'm not just, I'm not gonna read all of this, um. But. The idea is around. Using resources that we already have, um, including the superintendent update, the student update, what was updated. Um, and some of the. Have some distribution tools, but we need to develop a couple more. Uh, so to. To get the stories out there that sort of already exist, um, as well as develop tools. To, uh, the stories submitted from schools and community. Uh, and that will cover. What we talked about in the season, this will cover sort of what's happening, I think, yeah, um. It'll cover a lot of what's happened in schools, which I know is sort of duplicate content, but I think, um. It's good to put the content, success stories from a school, um, so. This is kind of around. Building a workflow and, and generating tools for press releases and submissions, uh, and newsletters, uh, and I do have. A timeline in here, I think. It will need to be adjusted if we're not setting goals tonight, and, and that's true, so. Uh, to answer your question, Al, this to me seems very doable, and within a one year timeframe, I have sort of. Uh, a launch date, it's not even, it will be the mid-November. Uh, and then there's been an assessment of the, to sort of see how we're doing, but, uh, we're, I would start with repackaging superintendent updates. Uh. And build a calendar, so we can use sort of like the calendar that we built, that we built from what Jen provided. Uh. That should help us. The goals to make this, because if it's hard. It makes it hard for us to do, it makes it hard for future school teams. Uh, and I propose that I would own this. But I, I'm happy to. Discuss further.
I'd be happy to help you on it, one of, one of the ones that I'm talking about. And then nicely to kind of what you already, those are some. Yeah, yeah.
I suggest that, that that's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, this. I, I feel like this will need to be built out a little more because there. This is very high level, it's not, there's not, there's no specific steps that, that I think we need to, to build into this, but, um. I, I think it's a good start.
I like the idea of leveraging the information that we're already getting, there's so much that comes with the school, you know, for updating international purposes that. Figuring out ways to push that out to broader community helps us play that role of bridge between the schools. And the community without doing the work of having to create, you know, a new stream of information.
Right. It's low hanging fruit for, for, in a lot of cases, I think our discussion around enrollment numbers, um, in our last meeting. Made me think about. How important it is to be able to, to tell the stories rather than just provide the data, because data, it's just. Data, but we weren't able to sort of build a story around it. Uh, I think this is very different from sending out our minutes, and our minutes are meant to be. An overview, and this is sort of meant to be more digestible for the public, so. Uh, I'm hoping that. If we don't attend our meetings, we'll read our communication a little bit better. Uh, and get a better sense of what we're doing, sort of. Wow. So, and we need to develop some of those, uh. Some of those avenues that will build, you know, this, um. We talked a while ago about exploring social media, seeing if that's a tool we can use to go out there, so obviously, all these things exist, um, and we just need to. Uh, build it.
Yeah, I think it's also important to understand from the community, like, what communication channels. Meet people where they are to kind of catch them in stride, so they don't have to go seeking information out, but it's something that they just have to come across. So I think to your point, it's very important for them to understand the story as we go, because when I think about how it starts to. With it. Bringing people along, the enrollment numbers, and understanding the why and the different pieces of it just will help us build that credibility.
Right, we, it's tough to do that when we're so reliant on other people's, uh, out to us.
Your questions? Discussion? Ready?
So my second goal is, is also a communication goal, but it's, it's a little more specific to communicating the work we're doing on the goals themselves, so. Um. The building a goals tracker. That we can use, people can track our progress and see where we are on some of these, um, deadlines that we're going to set for ourselves as part of the smart goal process. Uh. I, I can, I, but this one's pretty simple, or pretty straightforward, just communicating out on our goals and, and. I think that helps us keep focused, it helps, uh. You know, be informed, so, pretty straightforward, I do have a timeline of this as well, and obviously, as a goal tracker, it would need to be. Next to the goal, in the timeframe of the goals, so, uh, again, this would need to be adjusted, but. This is sort of using some Google tools that, that, um. I'm accustomed to using, I can definitely, you know, teach, but luckily, they're Google tools, so there's sort of, there's a lot of help out there, if you need guidance. Uh. Sort of manage. Sheet. Uh, tracker that we could publish on our website, I think we have to. Uh, tracker that we could publish on our website, I think we have to talk to the district about, you know. Whether they can go the same or what. Um, again, I would, I'm hoping that. It could just be built into our existing cycle, like additional costs, but, um. I have here that the, the tracker would be built by the end of October. And the launch would be in November. Again, I think we'll need to adjust these because. Do that for us. So. Uh, and again, I, I, I don't mind owning this one, and this is not. One, I mean, it's not strictly a communication tool, so, uh. It's, again, I think the other thing that's important for both these goals is lots of documentation, so if. If, uh, if I needed to leave school community alone, uh. This wouldn't be forgotten, we'll keep using it.
This is something that we've all heard about a lot. Being, um, so if this is anything about this one. Important, I also like, I mean, both of these. The theme of laying the foundation of things that we can build and scale, that kind of surpasses our own times, we won't have to. Regret that we all. Important, just like consistency, like, oh, well now to say it's, um.
Yes, and, and I think trying to rely on tools that aren't going to vanish, open the middle, it's just Google Sheets filling anymore, yes. Uh, but sort of leveraging technology that, like, most businesses.
I guess the framework you could start to work on, unless you already know, it's just, I, I just need the content and I'm familiar with the tools, or.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we want to go ahead with this goal, I, I could absolutely, I mean, we can input the goals at a time. Um. So, yeah, I think that this is something, I mean, I think we're. I hope, you know, we also. Will be getting to work on, on goal one, whether it's an official goal or not, just because of the communication stuff, that's. What we're likely to discuss, so.
Yeah, right, and you like that this goal is that it. You know, it's easy, I think, for teams to set goals, and then you really don't look at them. Right, you don't keep them evergreen, and you know, you look at them once, you know, at the end of the year, so I, I like that. This kind of builds in and it's, it's kept upfront, we look at it. Uh, you know, we can discuss it at meetings as appropriate, on a regular scheduled basis, so.
Which, yeah, that is a good point, because if. We may want to set a cadence for those checkings. Uh, and whether that's to update this tool. Or to update the public or both, it may be something we want to add into the sort of calendar that we establish, so.
Any other discussion around this call? Alright, um. I guess the next goal is Melissa enhancing community communication engagement.
Yeah. Pretty similar, I think, to what Henry was just describing, um. But it, just through a lot of conversations, it's become evident that. We have improvement, um, that we need to make on communication and bringing people along and, um, transparency and accountability, so. I think what I'm suggesting around that is basically doing baseline survey this fall to kind of understand how. We need to think through the details, but. How informed folks feel with the accessibility of information, the communication, kind of understanding of baseline for how the community feels like we're doing. Um, and then using that and like three specific pieces, um, to support it, so basically trying to drive whatever the baseline of that is higher can follow the spring. Um, but then another thing which ties into what you're talking about was just a post-meeting instant recap, but I don't need your. Ninety percent of the main committee meetings, um. I think to Henry's point, the minutes are helpful, but it's not very digestible for folks that are just kind of trying to. And we're doing. Um. I think this is achievable because it's, again, building on things that have already been done, I think it's, it's important to understand the baseline of. How the community thinks we're doing, um. And just establishing that basically we can care, we're listening, and we're working to impact that. Um, I think it's aligned with, and achievable within kind of this, uh. Down there, this down there school year, um. I would say like an intermediate review, kind of middle of the year, spring to see how we're trending. And I was suggesting that communication subcommittee, all of this, I think. Now carrying Henry's goals, there's a way to follow the. Season to one or two together, um.
Yeah, what I'm kind of seeing is that. We were, I think it makes sense to break this into. There's, there's one that's sort of. Outgoing information, and there's one that's focused on, on coming to the position, and I think that both these goals have, have sort of both in there. And, but I think if we sort of rebalance them so that one is about, how do we get feedback? From the community? And what do we do with it? And then the other one, we sort of, how do we provide a mission or.
Yeah, so.
Any questions for the further questions, Henry? Alright, and then there was a goal around strengthening financial transparency in community and the state.
Yeah, um. So I think the, the purpose of this, which is kind of obvious by the title, but. Improve how marble head families and community members understand the school budgets. Um, making sure that folks are clear, cost drivers, um. Opportunities, really offering opportunities for dialogue and building trust with the community for how we are allocating that budget. Um, we obviously have. A, a challenging budget year upcoming, and I think it's going to be particularly important for this cycle. To make sure that we are. Giving folks that transparency, giving folks information, um, like one pagers. Public presentation decks, like kind of public meetings, answer questions, um, a couple of community forums. And again, kind of using a survey as the baseline, like community reported understanding of the, the school budget in. This like fall semester versus spring semester, um. I think there is an opportunity to collaborate with. Kind of off the back of this, the, um, FinCom team putting together the budget story, um. We're really trying to make sure we are proactive in. Like when our budget subcommittee meetings are scheduled, then kind of our calendar, and just making sure that we are, like, folks along, so. The intent would be to really address the challenge, um. Of continuing to explain to the public, like, additional funding requests, while declining enrollment is happening, and just making sure folks really understand, um. So, I mean, the deadline would be between now and March twenty twenty six, and working upwards over the next six months, but, um. The committee has to approve the whole budget, um, but taking steps. And with this goal, I think that. It's not possible to over communicate. All the research is required, and so. All intensive. It's doing, things seem to be hard, and then they need to understood, and so finding different ways to shoot the function is really. Now we're going to feed back for challenges and. Although, I just kind of thought structure. We should get people and bring people along.
Let me throw in the discussion in this call. I can listen. Goal five is around elevating the educator voices in the spirit.
Yeah, this one was mine, if I didn't, um. Mine out, but as well as Melissa did theirs, um. So I've been thinking about how we can make sure that the school committee is hearing from educators to inform our decision-making, um. You know, we get a lot of information from the administrators, but. Hearing from that educator's work in our buildings on a daily basis is also really important. Um, so my suggestion for this year would be to jointly with the administration, hold a series of listening sessions to understand our educators' perspectives on the issues that we're focusing on. Um, I think we could do that in different ways, we could, you know, do. School-specific listening sessions, like elementary and. Older student sessions, um, and also, you know, look at specific issues, maybe we do a session about. Budget, maybe we do a session about student services, and sort of thinking about issues that. We're dealing with in our district and, and making sure that we hold. Opportunities to hear from educators and think that there's a way we can structure those, you know, without using the full committee. And so that they wouldn't have to be held in a meeting, and perhaps we could create an environment where educators would be more comfortable. Um, speaking freely with many members about challenges in schools. And then, um, as part of elevating educator voices, I would be interested in exploring adding an educator representative to sit at the. Table during school committee meetings, um, and to do that as part of, you know, I would like to see our student representatives. Play a more active role, um, you know, in our workshop, somewhere Elashia mentioned. Districts have other, you know, they have a CPAC representative, so I think exploring who else could be. Part of our conversations that we're having. To help. Have special commissions, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I think there's stuff on the first.
I think before you do that, I think before we do that, we're gonna need to shut with legal, as we do in the policy, specifically for this. Any, well, teachers from teachers, um, perhaps that may be expanded, um, to sit on. That's a specific voting number, so we just need to, that might. I have. It's part of my thinking of it as sort of an explore, there's lots of complications.
Yes, even some of the things you talked about, the folk, I mean, I think that's great, the folks moved to great, um. You know, I think there's, you know, there's always this, um. Relationship between superintendent and, and, um. Teachers and the staff, and that's staff per se, um, we are not the supervisors of anyone except the superintendent, um. So there's, you know, we, we need to, I think, just be respectful in that process of that. And that's where I think we would, we would want to have input from, you know, public leadership. On the, on the staff side and superintendent, as to how that would actually, you know, work, um. Because I wouldn't want. Anyone to be put in an uncomfortable position. I agree, and, and maybe there are other ideas on that as well, you know. So, that's all, that would be my only, um. Concern.
So what would you see as reasonable, if, if we worked to set says, well, would you see as sort of reasonable next steps to start that? Exploration.
For this one?
For this particular.
Well, I think it would be for any of our calls. You need to probably agree on them, but them up, make them clear, and then we love the plan on how. We're gonna execute that, I think that input from leadership and superintendent in this particular case is. Power enough, and I don't think we can go forward with this goal without hearing from. What the participants would like to see. If they'd like to. We have it now, we get. Um, we don't know how John, John feels, we don't know how leadership feels, um, so.
I think it'd be worth exploring that before we start discussing the self, you know, so.
It's not going to be feasible, then we should.
I mean, we have a joint there management committee, and we have some sort of formal things in place that not want. To judge us anyway, you know, we, we actually have come away, you know, quite a way in the last year or so, and I. Know we have a ways to go, but I, you know, I just want to just really be very cognizant of. All parties, and how they feel about this, because like I said, we would not want to put anyone, either superintendent or anybody, um, in, on, back with your staff to, in a position that. Is uncomfortable, or. On, I don't, I mean, like, we're on the spot, or. I mean, in the perfect world, everyone would be able to free flow of thoughts and ideas, and we could share everything, but then. There's the reality of, you know, sitting in a room with, you know, your supervisor, and so I just, I would wanted. Not to anything to here. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I agree. That's what you're saying, this is an exploration, it's not saying we're definitely going to do this. I'm, I'm curious, I, I've heard in the past. People have a similar respect there around student representation, being more than what we have right now. Can we potentially make that part of this exploration too? Would the committee be open to that, or we want to kind of?
What I would say about that is, uh. Mo- many school committees have a student representative, and. In some cases, actually, your voting members, they're high, but not, not very many, um, and. The purpose of it. I'm not sure we are necessarily embracing what the purpose of that is, right, it's to actually hear your voice. That being said, I, I think that even given the small size of our, um, of our, this school district, having one student. Um, be the voice of, you know, the entire student body is, is probably unrealistic. I would like to see, and I don't think this is a school committee goal, I would like to see as part of a district improvement plan and a superintendent goal. Which I believe is one of, it's one of John's current goals, I don't know what we're gonna see from this group, is, is enhancing student voice. And that, in my, from my perspective, is really the responsibility and the, um. Jurisdiction and the administration, and, and the building administrators and his administrators to. Create formal ways. For student voice, usually it's high school, probably middle school, but. We've seen, you know, Mary come talk to us about leadership in the Brown School, you know, in the elementary, it's arguably not. The same as you would have in a student government or student council at high school, but. You know, that really, in my opinion, it's just my opinion, is the responsibility of the superintendent to be enhancing that. And that then makes its way up to the school committee through the district improvement plan, through, uh, potentially s- school advisory councils, um, and that's. Probably, in my opinion, the. Best way for students to be heard, right, because we, again, are not responsible, believe it or not, for students, we are responsible for budget policy, you know, as they were superintendent. The day-to-day operations of the school, including the upward optimization of the, our policies, like, yeah, lives of superintendent. Um, and his team, so. That could be a goal. I think personally, I don't, I don't think it should be school, I don't think it should be school, I think it should be John's fault. To have it done, however you describe it, enhancing student voice, strengthening student voice, having student voice, uh. Come with, you know, smart, magical goal, or smart goals.
It may be that exploring, having a educator input, kind of educator voice on the school, it might be a good. Template for. Next year's goals of adding, maybe adding a student rep. You know, in a more robust capacity, just seeing how it goes with the teachers, seeing how John feels about it, and we can. Sort of crawl toward that goal and see if it's appropriate.
Personally, I think that strengthening the student representative is far more attainable than. This process of bringing a teacher rep on to the committee, I must say, there's a, we first have provided, we can, I'm not sure we can. By our policy, by the law, but if we can. Again, I'm gonna, my spidey sense is that. There would have to be some real clear. Um, sort of, um, guidelines that's going to be, and I'm sure that. I'm sure that the staff would want, you know, whoever this, staff that they were, the, you know, staff, I would want to know that too, because, again. You know, there is a chain of, like, you know, there is, uh, how, how this process works, and we need to, I just feel like we need to be really. Cognizant of that, you're not supervisors, you're not like. And we don't want. Change, you know, damage or have any of that done, the very, very important relationship between superintendent. And staff and leadership, um, so that's.
Have you asked Alicia if there are. Other districts?
I'll ask that question around the workshop, because I remember her saying, you know, some districts have CPAC. Rep or a Metco rep, you know, all as non-voting members, and they're just at the table for discussion. And I know there's M A S, there's a recent M A S C newsletter, you know, talking about. The intended role of the student rep, which is far more robust than, you know, what we do in our district, and so. Those are all things that we could.
That's the things, yeah, I don't, I don't, I've never heard of a teacher rep on a student, that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, um. In regards to Metco and CPAC, again. In some respects, I think it's, you know, it's. We have not necessarily, um. Maximize the role of liaison in the, to those two areas, uh, we haven't, or arguably, I don't think we have set in specific. Um, expectations on the part of those liaison, which we probably could, that's one thing we could also do. Because again, I'm not saying you're, as I could do this, but. Off, you know, offline conversations or the ability to develop a relationship between liaison and Sebeco or liaison and CPAC is really important to be able to come back to the committee and say. You know, th- this is what I'm hearing, um, you know, versus necessarily having someone at the table, I don't know, I just. A lot of work um, in relationship building, and um, I would argue progress can take place offline. Outside of this.
So I have.
And I'd like to see those relationships, I'd like to see those liaison positions.
Yeah.
I know, have a little more.
I have two comments, one is, would it make sense to add to reaching out to M A S C? Or, or sort of some example sense as part of our exploratory steps for this goal, and then. Jen, do you think it might make sense to add a goal to strengthen the lia, like to add a separate goal for, for the liaison?
So let me um, take like a hundred steps back here, I've already commented on it. Any disposal, from where I, you know, just one person. I believe our goals should be focused on what our responsibility is, which is budget, policy, and our resume superintendent. That's our responsibility, that's our burden. That's what I believe, that's where I believe our goals should be focused on. I don't necessarily see that in some of these goals. Um, I mean, so sort of tangentially, but like, for instance, we have, we are facing a. Monumental budgets, we are going to be faced with um, a pretty significant, I think, a pretty significant uh, ask of the town. And. That is the ultimate goal. So I, I mean, and I think at the very least, one of our goals ought to be. We secure adequate funding for our schools. To make it about as basic as we possibly can, um, which is not, just, which is, it's a lot that goes into it. Um, I also believe that, and I think this is sort of back to you, you had a goal around budget, and I, I think you're, you're. My, what I read into that goal was around um. Output of information versus input of information. I have, this is my seventh year on, finally, on school committee, um. I have been asking for all of those years for zero-based budget and for several of those years for staff development, and we don't have a. Um, the data is imperative for us to be able to be the argument to this town. As to why we need the budget that we're gonna. And I believe somehow that needs to be probably reflected in our goal for this year is, um. What we are going to do to build this budget that will be able to be sold to the town. It depends on the right, we. To get support from the voters of of town maybe and potentially from the other townwide electorate, um. That's very important. The next is basically around, I think, around the superintendent, right, it's our responsibility. Um, and again, I don't know what the wording is, but we're coming out of what was arguably, um. Oh, oh, I'm really, we're going into the development of the district improvement. That is going, potentially will be the proper roadmap for budgets going forward, staffing going forward. And one thing that none of us have talked about is student achievement. Is maximizing student achievement, that's what we're here for. And so for me, I think one goal probably should be how we're going to work with the superintendent on, on those, and probably the. Uh. The, the, the tool for that or the map for that is the distribution. Personally, I think that's probably, so I, I think, and then I think also around communication, which is not our. Goal, but it's our responsibility, right, is communication. And so I think maybe, you know, one of those goals, if we were to have three, let's just say we have three goals, um, and one of them could be. Around communication, and I think you have to figure out how to, how to communicate that. I think the idea of setting. Goal tracking is imperative, whether it's tracking the goals that you set should be goal. Uh, you know, I guess we can sort of argue whether that's true or not, I think tracking the goals is our responsibility. Not.
We don't do a good job of sharing that, you know, so.
Yes.
I think that I, I see what you're saying. I think that in particular, communication is. Is essential to all of these goals, if you're talking about, I mean, if you're talking about the budget and going to the town with the budget, we don't really have a lot of really. Good tools to communicate with the community about our budget. I think we need to build those tools so that we can effectively do those more responsibly, so. I, I, I completely agree with you, but I also think that. We may be sort of running in the same direction with this communication goal. Versus budget or not first, but together with the budget.
So I think back to your original question around involvement of M A S C to get an idea of maybe what happens elsewhere in other districts, some certain things. I think we'll, we'll get that inherently, because they will probably be the facilitators helping us with this going forward. So I think I would expect them not only to help us facilitate, putting together our goals. But then also provide information around how, maybe how other districts are doing things and what the percentage of districts might be around that.
Yeah, that's.
So I think we'll, we'll now build that in, given that we'll have a facilitator help us with this going forward.
If I can jump ahead and talk about the other goal that I had submitted, because Janet really dovetails with what you're talking about. Um, kind of at the heart of the goal is supporting the superintendent and the completion of the district improvement plan, which I think is. Imperative that it be done, um, and that it be. Understood by the public, and I think that committee has a typical role to play there and making sure that people understand. Why the plan is what it is and where, where we are and where it is taking us, but I also see that as. Part of a recentering of the committee's role in sort of high-level. Planning and strategy, which, not to get in to the history of strategic planning in the district, but. You know, the district improvement plan, as I understand it, is sort of based on. Planning work that's maybe done several years ago, you know, so.
Well, John's working on a district improvement plan right now, which is nothing to do with.
So my understanding is that it did, but I think it doesn't.
We have to fight conversations for that. I'm like, I need to keep that under. Um, I mean, he's doing his own surveys, his own data. And then he's work, I mean, he's given us an update, it's worth having an update, so we understand that.
I mean, I think it's important to understand where it stands right now, and then I, I think we're in a bit of a limbo period of like, there is no. Strategic plan and where we're headed while he's preparing this.
Well, the president says this in. Two twenty six. Right, one to come, right, so there's there, and then he's developing his, his different plan, which was. Originally, they had talked about having it done by October, and he's now talking about. Next spring, I think we can, we have that conversation.
So I see it as sort of twofold, you know, supporting him in the completion of that process and making sure that it's, you know. Understood and that there's, you know, the appropriate level of input from community and whatnot, but also. Thinking as a committee about. Strategic planning going forward, and you know, what the committee's role is in that. Um, how we make sure things like setting our goals, it should be more clear in the future, hopefully, there's a. District improvement plan and everybody's goals are ladder-y into that, and I think part of why this conversation is disjointed in a way. Is that we aren't all looking at the same document and saying, this is where we're going, and this is our role in helping the district get. Um, but sort of thinking through, once, once the district improvement plan is done, what does the committee want to see the next steps?
Yeah, I mean, the district improvement plan, in my, as I understand it, doesn't include super many goals. Right, so I think that, that they're sort of scaffold above that, is that is our role to help, um. Once we've approved the district improvement plan, which is our job to do that, um, is to, our goals should, should be supported, right, but. I'm not sure that it's gonna be, I don't know, it's gonna be, we don't usually have a section on the district. I don't think specifically, it's my understanding, school committee members, that superintendent develops it, it's a plan for the district, and then our goals should be theories. Before that, and that's our responsibility to set the responsibility.
So it sounds like, um, towards the next steps, I need to reach out to M A S C. Ask for a person to help us facilitate. Getting to the, you know, uh, goals that we will vote on, so uh, I will do that. Is there anything else that we need to discuss or talk about our roles right now?
I would just caution, or I shouldn't say caution, ask many members. As we go forward with this, and if we come, you know, we come back together, which is an open meeting, um, and we talk about, because a lot of this stuff is great stuff, but. I think we need to be aware of, um, the resources that will be needed for these goals. Uh, particularly around issues around communication, issues around data, we have a very lean organization here at Marblehead. Um, used to look at other school districts across, you know, the hollow of some our size and they're, that have, you know, amazing amounts of support and resources, we don't have that. Um, we are very limited in what we are going to be able to ask of the administration and support. Um, we have a little bit of admin support, um, we get some support from T A C, from I T, but. There's not a lot of extra family, so I think we just, I wanna be careful that we're not over, and under delivery.
I think you're absolutely right, Jen, I mean, I always aim to do things with no cost involved, hopefully, I think, I think that's also important for. Add like, building longevity into this, so that we're not. If we have a recurring cost and that cost starts to drop off, and we're not, you know, we decide to cancel a subscription to a tool or something. That doesn't empower future school committees to, to use.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about that, I'm not really afraid to tell them about like.
Yeah, no, I, I get.
And even asking for admin support, central admin support. There's just not a lot of in there, this isn't, we don't have.
Yeah.
We do not have, you know, access, I mean, I'm sure the teachers can attest to that, we don't have access capacity, um.
I think everyone in the community, the administration, will, will appreciate us being a little scrappy here, and.
Right, which is why I'm saying that, like, we need to make sure we don't overpromise what we can.
So that's sort of what I think track, we talked about tracking, I think that helps with that, because. You know, it's, it's, we're making decisions right now, looking potentially, you know, say twelve months out. Well, a couple of months in, we're gonna know a lot more, and we may know what's realistic, and maybe what's not that realistic. Then I think we, we alter things as a result of that, so.
Well, I think we have an obligation as we go through this, if John's not here, to be working closely with John. Uh, particularly, you know, for instance, you know, some of the things you're talking about in terms of, you know, press releases and news, or like. Be talking with John, like exactly what are we going to need in.
Yes.
Resources, um, to support that and, and, and. Don't question he will be honest with us, you know, as to what he, what he can give and what he, you know, what's available and what's not, and then you're gonna have to be sure we adjust our goals. To be able to deliver what was there.
Absolutely, and I think that the, what I was trying to get across in my first call around communication was that. We're using things that wouldn't acquire, require any additional work on us, so he already put this superintendent updates. We just need to find a way to repackage that, um, I agree with you. Yes, anyway, I agree, we're on the same.
Can you repackage, I mean, like the newsletter, if, somebody has to do that.
Yes, someone has to.
Write it, format it, send it, like, you know, it takes hours.
Yeah, believe me, I meant.
And we don't have staff that have hours to give us, and just, that's all I'm saying, it's, let's just make sure that we, we talk and talk about it, so what's realistic, so nobody is surprised. Which I think we've been guilty of in the past, right?
Yeah, uh, so, absolutely, that would, then he should be part of the conversation.
And why also, when I found out forth this, I've often thought social media, you know, is, is actually a timed effective way of communicating. Um, because it, you know, tends not to be a huge time suck in terms of, you know, getting, pushing out information. Um, members can, you know, do that, um, it is a way to. And. To, you know, potentially large number of people with those wants time.
Agreed, I think we definitely need to explore that, and, and my intention is that members of the school committee would be responsible for. For these communications, not people of straight, they have their own tools, they have their own messages. I just think we're, we are probably rebroadcasting a lot of stuff on our. Uh, channels, but, uh, yeah, anything.
Anything else around our goals? Um, the next item is just discussing process, another important thing that we need to do outside of setting our goals. Is doing the superintendent's evaluation. Now, and again, I believe this is something that we've used a facility in the past. And likely makes sense to, to, to do so going forward, so I'm not gonna talk a lot of detail. Um, other than, you know, there is a end-of-cycle summit of evaluation. That our superintendent, it's kind of the first step where he fills out how he's progressing versus his goals, right, and that's his words. And then there's components of this that we then would individually, you know, write as to what we think. About that, and there's also several things that we need to, there's performance standards, there's these actual goals that we need to evaluate as a committee. And that's where facilitation is very important, so, you know. Do we all individually do it? Um, not violating open meeting law, right, and then uh, facilitate. Doing a composite, it's called composite, that will then take into account all our, all our ratings and comments, so, um. Just want people to know that's, you know, it was put in Dropbox, it's just the, the process overview. It's the actual form that both the superintendent and us will use to evaluate, yeah. And so I just wanted to get everyone to, you know, that'll be over the next few meetings, I think we have two big priorities, our, our goals. School committee goals, and then obviously the evaluation superintendent and his goals for this year.
Yeah, keep in mind that, um, he's on kind of an off cycle, it's got, uh, on our October, October cycle, well, we're almost October, um, so. Less the community thinks we're well into the school year, and he doesn't pose, it's definitely, it's kind of an off, off cycle. Um, I think the other thing to keep in mind is, yeah, we, again, we're not, we come together to share evaluations, um, it is done in open meeting. Um, and in the past, as I recall. There have been evaluations that have been done, we are one or two en masse of committee members that come together, you are allowed to do this, and. Compile a deposit of. Separately, you know, separately, come together to the committee with a deposit. Um, last time, we missed two, at least the last evaluation, we did not do that, I strongly. Discourage that, I think we should come together, each with our evaluation, and talk about it, and compile it together.
Yeah.
To all know, you know, we're being heard.
Yep, I, I agree with that approach. There are some comments or?
Is it the same evaluation every year, we like, reimagining the wheel to create a new evaluation?
No, it's the same, it's the same, yeah, and he has to get certain requirements. For John being a non, um, um. Superintendent, we, I believe we don't have to use DESI's. For during the midset, you do two, you do that cycle and then a final, I don't think we have to use it for the mid-cycle, I think we did. In, in this past spring, and, but then you do have to, I think there was some of it, and it gets a middle to DESI, so it's the, we don't. Got choice, it's actually, um, as you get into it, it's, it's a little bit, I don't, it's not all that.
Melissa, just, you know, you'll, you may see as you're looking through this, the mid-cycles that Jen talked to, that like DESI and M A S C will call it a, a form of.
Got it.
Assessment, and then a summit of assessment is end-of-cycle form, that's basically it.
For some reason, it was the principal one in here, I don't know if that was meant.
It was, yeah, taken out, yeah, it was no, it was.
Well, we're just sticking.
Yes, it's just the one that says, you know, superintendent and a value there to talk.
And it would be John's responsibility, he does his self, I believe, my understanding is, I don't know, um, is when he does his self-assessment, that he would provide. So we're, you know, you might, some members might be looking for specific data, but generally, he should be providing it for the, the specific goals. Providing it for the, for the specific goals. And then we, we can use, obviously, we can use anecdotal, we can use our experience with him, etc., etc., but, no, we should be providing that.
And it'd be one of those things that, you know, for, for much newer members, you know, if you're not comfortable, you haven't been here long enough to, yeah, to me. It's honestly something you don't, you don't fill out, so. Any other questions on? Okay, um, subcommittee and liaison updates. We have any of those?
Um, I have two. I, I do, I did meet with the CPAC. Um, it was a great meeting. I, I, it was nice to meet them. Um. I think one thing that I was discussing with them was what. What do they want to get out of the relationship, the, you know, the liaison between the school community and CPAC? And I think that's something we'll then discuss. I think the, obviously, discussions around the special education budget will be important to them. And I offer to. Possibly invite some other members of this committee. I, you know, some of them from the budget committee, Jen, or Melissa, people would like to join that. Uh, CPAC meeting when we're sort of ready to have that discussion, if they find that valuable. Uh, and also that they are looking for members. So if anyone. Wants to point CPAC. Any questions before I have another update? Uh, so the, the other update I have was that we had our first meeting of the roof committee. Which again went very well. We had another presentation from, um, Leftfield and, uh, R D A was there as well. Um, we were focused on sort of introductions and, and looking at the newer timeline. Or upcoming decisions that we need to make. Mostly around what they could apply versus the. So, uh, again, that went really well. So I think it's a really great and knowledgeable group of people. So thank you for helping assemble that. Can I, that's it? So if you guys have any questions on that, please hop on. Are you too page? Let's watch.
Um, we had a policy subcommittee meeting this morning, um, and we'll be bringing up. More slated conceding provisions. Which, that's needing to talk to Al about, which agenda, you know, can release most of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, we got a meeting, we, we're gonna be meeting in a month, um. Unless there's a holiday in one of your. Um, I just wanted to say, I don't know, you know, any subcommittee, including the policy subcommittee, takes direction from the whole committee. Our trophy. So, you know, if there are any policies that, uh. Anyone has, you know, questions on or looking to. And modify or, or add, add a policy or rescind a policy or, or whatever, um, you know. Come forward, you know, that this is the place to do that, to give us the direction. You know, we're beyond what we're doing. We, we have sort of administrative work we're doing, which is updating, um, policies. For kind of some minor stuff. Um, but, and then we, hopefully we get to, we'll start a full review, uh. But again, you know, anything that anybody wants to.
So Jen, along, along those lines, uh, one thing I've heard about, or just a lot of people have asked me about is the. When, um, students can start kindergarten. And right now, I believe we do it based upon turning certain age by the start of the school year. Um, and so that can be interesting in certain years like this year, right, where we started before September first. So, and it can vary from year to year, depending on when your birthday is. So I guess I, I'm just.
Don't think it varies. I think we have a birthday on September first.
It's not, it's by the start of the school year, I believe. Um, so I guess I'm just asking.
That's not a policy. It's my opinion, that's, that, that I believe is the. Superintendent.
I, I have to go back. I thought I read, I thought it was in the, the details, it was in one of the policies. So I guess I'm just asking, could that be explored? It's, it seems like a lot, a lot of districts in the state uses specific date of September first, August thirty first, so.
But what's the concern? That. In other words, if it's earlier.
I think the concern is that if, if the, what it's tied to is the first day of school, then in a year when we start school on September fifth.
Oh, okay, it's not the, it's not the.
September second, go versus this year's, they said, certainly.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think, um, we can really, we got, we have to talk to John.
Yeah, I'm just asking to, as you said, just to suggest to. Think about that.
And actually.
You heard from parents or you heard from teachers?
Parents.
I mean, we probably wanted to hear from teachers too. You might, maybe you have some thoughts too.
I did hear some feedback in the CPAC meeting around the targeting this policy that I know just. I must, uh, you know, I'm sorry to hurt this, so, but I was all over.
Tried, tell them. I tried, I hundred percent don't agree with it.
That, uh. It's not, that the policy does not. Especially. Off the door. Um, so that.
So it's a issue around targeting?
Around targeting. Getting to school on time for. For students who, who just need different accommodations.
Well, if they have that combination, then that policy doesn't apply.
So probably similarly, we need to, I have that. It's my understanding.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass that back to CPAC.
Or to Lisa Gray.
To Lisa Gray.
Was she, does she attend the meeting?
Uh, yes, yeah.
All right, so she, yeah, she would be the one to address that. That's my understanding. You have accommodation in IP. Or a fighter, or I guess, um. The, that should, that should not take. That would supersede, I believe. Um, but I, you know, I've made my feelings very clear on the attempted policy. Not so much charter, but I guess that policy. And, you know. The superintendent and I don't agree. Or the majority of committees though.
Anything else? All right, um, is there any new business?
Oh, wait, um, facilities.
I was trying to remember.
Yeah, we haven't, we didn't meet since the last meeting, so.
Yeah, so we, well, I was like that on. Yes, so, um, actually, most of. The, uh, updates were provided by Mike in our last meeting and sort of went through an exhaustive list of everything they did over the summer. Uh, again, I was. Really impressed with the work that he was doing.
Yeah, we met on, last on the fifth. We gave an update on eighteen, and we haven't met.
Uh, we didn't do updates last time. One thing we're gonna take a look at is school signage. I think is a, a, a nice little project that I'm excited to dive into. I've already started, sort of doing some of my background. Research and. I, I, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll look into that. I'm excited to be like.
All right, um, any new business? So the correspondence.
I have, I might have business. I have a.
Sorry.
I have a question around the charter school. So I gotta comment this morning. That. There is meant, I mean. I didn't, I didn't do any investigation, so, but there's meant to be a liaison to the charter schools in our school community.
There's also meant to be a liaison to the ministry meeting.
So I, I think this, well, this person was, was interested in sort of rekindling with that relationship in terms of. Our committee and charter school.
Is it through the committee or the superintendent?
I, I have to look into, I mean, th- this was one person's comment and would, you know, so, I, I think, I. I'm gonna do a little bit of research into it, but again, I may come back. To our next meeting with the findings of that. I just, I, I wanna respond to this person's.
I would talk to John. And who's the, who sits on the security subcommittee meeting? So have you guys had?
We haven't, 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 he was moving to. Orderly meetings and stuff.
Okay, and I know Charter does sit on it.
Um, yeah, I guess this falls under new business, but I know several of us are going to the N A S N S L A S C. Uh, conference in November. Um, if we want to have someone vote at the delegate assembly. Um, we need to submit a delegate and that has to be formally voted upon by the school committee. So I believe the delegate form must be submitted by ten twenty. So at our next meeting. We would, if we want to have a delegate, we would need to vote him or her at that time. So. Uh, I guess between now and then, if you're interested in doing something like that, think about it and, you know, we'll, we'll address it.
Yes, but the other thing you have to do is they are going to have a slate of question for, you know, slate of. Questions to, that the delegate will vote. So we also would need to review those and give. Vote on what we want the delegate, how we want to vote.
Now, we haven't, I think Jen said this, and we haven't, haven't had, is that the reason why we haven't had a delegate up to this point? Over the last couple of years?
We've never had, sorry, sorry. Oh, that's not true. I think we've occasionally, never, um. Just as a note to yourself, delegate. It is one of the very best, after you win the lost game.
So I get, I have to say that. We don't, I should, I should have started with, we don't have to have a delegate. And if we do want to delegate, we need to, we need to act upon it by the next meeting.
It might be worth, um, just taking a look at, like. I don't know, they, they probably come out with a slate, all right, to take a look at what it is that's being voted on. Um, often, there are sort of, um. Things that are being voted on are sort of aspirational. The things that M A S, the messages that members of M A, delegates of M A S C want to send to. D S E or the legislature. So it's not generally, um, things that are kind of. Actually have, um, effective. I just maybe take a look at it. I'm sure they have them out already. Um, with the agenda. And if that's, if there's something there that this committee feels we really feel very strongly, we want to. You know, send an element to be able to. Someone wants to stay. And drive.
All right, uh, okay, I am looking. For a motion and vote to meet in executive session for the following reasons. So pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose to lead to discuss litigation. Marblehead School Committee and Marblehead Teachers Association, M U P L twenty four dash one oh five seven zero. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. Also, uh, going into executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss threatened litigation. By former student services chairperson Lawrence Skelton Leard. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session.
So moved.
Seconded.
A roll call is needed for this, Jen?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Okay.
In favor.
Henry?
In favor.
Mal Williams in favor. The motion passes five to zero. So we will now meet in executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Marblehead School Committee and Marblehead Teachers Association. M U P L S twenty four dash one oh five seven zero is an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the school committee and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. Also, executive session pursuant to chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three, purpose three. To discuss threatened litigation by former student services chairperson Lawrence Skelton Leard. Is an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. And we are now in executive session.